Okay, that's better. Meeting will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meeting Act has been that on May 18, 2022, 2025, a copy of the notice specifying the date, time, and location was posted on a bulletin board outside of Murrell Hall, mailed, faxed, or emailed to the Courier-News, given to the Clerk Administrator, and posted on a bulletin board outside of Murrell Hall. If anybody believes that this meeting is being held in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act, please state your views at this time. Hearing none. These proceedings are of a judicial nature. Only those items on the agenda that this Board is going to adjudicate tonight will be discussed. Proper judicial decorum will be maintained. Next item, roll call, please.
Chairman Adair.
Here.
Ed Allot.
Here.
Roberta Carpenitz.
Here.
Morgan McLaughlin.
Here.
Rich O'Neil.
Here.
Brian Wadimski.
Here.
John Flores.
Here.
Eric Alvarez.
Here.
And Stuart Daniels excused.
Okay. We have a quorum. Do we have any conflicts tonight? Nope, okay. Next item, pleas of allegiance.
Right, this should be in the condition.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
I agree with you, Cliff. The question is, should this?
Yeah, I asked and we decide on the record. Okay, next, I'm sorry. Next item, approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
Yeah, I'd like to just add something here, Art.
Sure.
It says, Richard O'Neil mentions putting out a fire. Wasn't there a loan as they were at the fire department?
You start them, you put them out. Someone like to move the minutes?
Oh, no.
Move second. Roll call, please.
Ed Allot.
Yes.
Roberta Carpenitz.
Yes.
Rich O'Neil.
Yes.
John Flores.
Yes.
Eric Alvarez.
Yes.
Okay, carried. Next item, resolutions.
Chairman, the one resolution that's on the, oh, thank you. Thank you. The one resolution that's on the agenda is for All American Auto Parts BV. I have submitted a resolution for the Board's attention. There were only, there are only a couple of little things. I, you know, I would, apparently, there was some, I'm not completely certain that I, my thinking is we should make it a condition, first of all. The issue regarding the circulation plan, there was a great deal of discussion about that, which took up several pages in the resolution. I don't know that we necessarily said, made it a condition of approval that the applicant would establish a circulation plan in, to the approval of Mr. Cole. Apparently, the, the understanding of everybody involved is that that was the case, so that condition will be added, you know, the resolution will be amended accordingly, and the Board should consider that it's, we're voting, it's voting on a resolution which will include, which will also include that as a condition of approval. If you look at paragraph 23 in the findings of fact, the issue is set forth and discussed. So I'll simply be making finding of fact 23, I'll be putting that in the form of a condition of approval, which is fine. I think all the parties agreed that there, that that might be an issue. I'm not sure that we necessarily concurred on whether it was a condition of approval, but to be completely belted and suspenders, my suggestion would be, and recommendation's going to be, that we add that as a condition of approval, that would be condition number nine. The only other thing is, is that, and this is typographical, rather than the, rather than the secretary being authorized in direction, the applicant will be authorized in direction, directed to close the notice of the resolution to be published in our official newspaper. So, and, you know, that's merely a typographical error on my part. I apologize. We'll correct it. The resolution can be considered to be voted on with that corrected text, because I'll make the correction as soon as I get home this evening. And other than that, I think everything is in order, and the Board can adopt the resolution as presented.
I've got a question.
Yes.
The circulation, that's a public street, basically. Who's going to enforce it? Maybe you mean pull it out of the street.
It's just, I just see it as the best.
That was the concern I had.
This is best efforts, that the tractor trails will come off of Fifth Street, take Center Street, and exit on the, on the bridge off of Fourth Street. That's it.
Because these are drayage drivers coming off the port.
I agree. It's just best efforts to say the circulation won't go through the community. Best efforts, Rich.
Yeah.
Just, in, just to say that you're going to do the one-way on Fifth, make the left on Center where the, the old tree business was.
Yeah.
Make a left, tractor trailers on the Fourth Street, the businesses on the left, drop off, and then leave on Fourth, the back to, just so it doesn't impact. I agree with you, Rich.
I get that, but I don't know how you'd ever enforce it, because these are.
No. It's just best efforts that the Board address.
It's a CYA.
I just don't want to, you know, somehow get an idea.
It's, it's not something that the police are going to be able to arrest a driver on. No, that's, we discussed that at the meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, I, you know, and frankly, at the time, the condition did not, you know, I know, I asked on the record, and it was not a, it did not appear to be necessary, but I understand that on second blush, one might want to have that, you know, frankly, to protect, just to protect the public interest. And I believe the Board could, could do that.
What do we do about it?
If we notice that there's a lot more trouble, I think at that point, we would have to, we would have to have the police advised, and they would have to be a little more vigilant. I mean, we, you know, we can't establish a truck route.
Right.
In a resolution, in a, I know. I mean, the Council would also have to step in and do this.
Okay. Yeah, it's just, not to impact the residents the best, it's just a concept route that.
Yeah, okay. I'm not so good at concepts, I'm good at black and white.
No, no, I agree with you.
I agree. I, I agree that what Cliff is saying, it's not something that is going to be the cops out there looking at it.
Yeah.
It's just to let them know that they should be doing this route, as are brought up, to minimize impacts to the public. That's it. That's just a, it's really a feel-good, Rich, to say your Board addressed it.
Yeah.
As, as the Chairman said, that CYA, that we, we recognize we're going to have 50, 53-foot tractor trailers going through that area, and that they should take this route to minimize impacts to the residents. That's it.
Well, there'd be 20 and 40 containers, so I.
Could be, yeah, right. 40, 40.
All right, I just was curious.
Someone like to move the resolution?
I'll move it.
Move, someone like to second it? Second, move in second. Roll call, please.
Chairman Adair.
Yes.
Morgan McLaughlin.
I don't think I can hear that.
No.
No, you, no, you were, you were, you were within 200 feet, you can't hear.
He wasn't there.
Oh, yeah, you were at the meeting, but you left before the hearing. That's right, sorry. Rich O'Neil.
Yes.
Brian Wadimski.
Yes.
Eric Alvarez.
Yes.
It's carried. Okay, next item, relief, it's, uh, application, BMR.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Eric Condrea, representing BMR, LLC.
Where's Frank?
Right there.
Right there.
Oh, God. Frank's been with me for us many times. And who else is with you?
Brian Conway, here as a planner tonight.
Okay.
Do you have any other witnesses you'd like to sworn in at this time, or shall we swear them in one at a time?
Um, any more witnesses? Witnesses, we thought that Eric Slomich up? None at this time. We might have some of the tenants show up, but I don't see them here.
Okay, would you like to, uh, do your introduction? And please enter your, and you've entered your appearance. I need to swear in your witness if he's going to, if he's going to testify.
Okay.
All right. Please stand and raise your right hand. You saw me swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter, it'll be the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record, sir.
Certainly. It's Brian Conway, C-O-N-W-A-Y.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Counselor, your witness.
Thank you. So we're here to seek approval of, there's four items, and Mr. Conway's prepared testimony to discuss the issues that have been presented in the Colton Associates memorandum of June 10th.
Okay.
Can you qualify?
Sorry?
Qualify me.
Uh, actually, your, your attorney should do that. Would you please favor the Board with your credentials?
Certainly. My name is Brian Conway. I'm a landscape architect and a professional planner. I graduated from college in 1989 with a degree, Rutgers, with a degree in environmental planning and design. I've been a licensed landscape architect since 1992, and a licensed professional planner since 1994. I've had varied experience in landscape architecture and planning for the past 30-plus years, even before many Boards, as, as a planner and as a landscape architect. I'm here mostly as a planner, although I will speak about some landscape architecture also.
Mr. Chairman, no objection.
None.
I have a question. Yeah, may I?
Certainly.
You're a landscape architect and planner and all that, do you deal with traffic issues?
No, I'm, I'm here to speak about planning tonight.
Okay, I just, for myself, I wanted to know that.
Yes.
Okay.
And any traffic-centric testimony tonight will be planning-based, not statistic-based.
Okay. Okay. We'll stipulate through his qualifications.
I'm just going to need help.
Okay. Sir, please proceed.
Thank you.
I appreciate you. I, I, I think, I mean, you know, I'll, I'll try to help you as much as I can, because the procedure here is a little, you know, a little bit different. Not this Board as opposed to any others, but, you know, this is, you know, you, we'd appreciate your testimony in support of the relief requested and enumerating the actual relief requested. Sir, are you an attorney-at-law of the State of New Jersey?
Yes.
Okay, have you, have you handled land use matters in the past, before Boards?
Uh, no.
All right, because there's certain protocols. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll help you.
Please.
Um, but anyway, if you, if you would, if you would provide us with your testimony, sir, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. So the, the project in question is 131 North Gaston Avenue, Somerville, block 74, lot 1701. It's in the B4 neighborhood business residential district. And it's also part of the Gaston Avenue redevelopment plan. I just wanted to make sure I got the terminology correct.
Okay.
A little bit of site description and project history. I have an exhibit here. It is the plan that we had submitted previously, but I had gone out and I had inventoried all the trees that were on-site, so the trees have been added to this. A1?
Yes, sir. Please.
So the, the drawing is called Existing and Proposed Tree Exhibit, and the drawing number is E1, and it's dated July 2nd, 2025 today. So the subject property is located at the southwest corner of North Gaston Avenue and William Street. They are both two-lane roads. There's a traffic light at the intersection with left-turn lanes heading south and west. The parcel is L-shaped with a 281.6-foot frontage along William Street and a 100-foot frontage along North Gaston Avenue. The address is 131 North, North Gaston Avenue, which is a smaller frontage, and the yard opposite that is the rear yard. The yard opposite the William Street frontage is designated as the side yard. The property ranges from 100 feet deep for this first piece to the east, and then it jogs back to 149, 147.69 feet deep, parallel to William Street. The total lot area is 34,952 square feet. There is a 100-year-old, one-story masonry building that was repurposed as retail under a 2006 approval, and we'll be talking about the 2006 approval throughout the testimony. The building is currently occupied by four tenants from west to east. There's Prima Pizza at the west end, High Caliber Ordinance was a gun, which is a gun shop in the center, Heritage, which is a hair salon to the east of that in the center, and the Delta Smoke Shop on the eastern end of the building. While the building has front elevations facing the street along both the William Street frontage and the North Gaston Avenue frontage, the main entrances into the building are on the south side of the building, facing the parking lot. There's a one-way access drive from North Gaston Avenue into the site with nine angled, nine angled parking spaces, including two handicap parking spaces. As you proceed west, west through the site, when you get to the end of the building, you can make a left to go to an additional parking area to the south, or go to the north, there's some additional parking there, and then to exit onto William Street. The rear parking lots collectively have 21 parking spaces. The drive-out to William Street was approved to be a one-way drive during the original site plan application. It should be noted, noted, however, that the drive is approximately 24 feet wide and can accommodate two-way traffic. So the application that I'm before you with tonight is for a new building-mounted tenant directory sign. It's proposed on the parapet on the east side of the building. The sign is not compliant with the zoning ordinance and requires variance relief that I will discuss tonight. In the course of the application, there were two other items from the prior approval that came up, specifically, street and parking lot trees, and the William Street driveway. I will discuss these two items first. They're related to the prior approval, and I'll finish with the signed variance. Based on the prior approval, and per ordinance, section 102-82L3, there's one street required for each 50 feet of lot frontage. The aggregate lot frontage between the William Street frontage and the North Gaston Avenue frontage is 381.6 feet, which would require eight street trees. There's also a section in the ordinance, 102-81.L2, that specifies that trees shall be located where they will not interfere with curbs, sidewalk, driveways, electric or telephone wires, or poles, utilities, or pipes located above or below the ground. It should be noted that along the entire property frontage along Gaston Avenue, as North Gaston Avenue as well as William Street, there are utility poles with low wires overhead. The building orientation and location in the close proximity to William Street really precludes plant, tree planting within that area, which leaves us essentially two areas to be able to plant street trees. The one of them would be the North Gaston Avenue frontage, the other one would be the area to the north of the parking lot and the landscape area to the west. In light of these constraints, we're proposing four street trees, two along William Street and two along North Gaston Avenue, one near the west corner of the prop, northwest corner, one adjacent to the building in a parking lot island. There's some building utilities, a ladder to the roof and the like, a small narrow tree there, I think would do a nice job of complementing that and helping hide those utilities. And then on the North Gaston Avenue side, we're proposing one between the driveway and the adjacent neighbor, I think it's an Indian restaurant, and then one to the north of the driveway. And what we're contemplating for these trees would be an upright Sargent cherry tree. Are there other cherry trees in the area? They're going to stay reasonably compact and narrow. I think they'll give us some nice verticality and some nice color in the springtime. So given that we are providing street trees in really what I believe are the most reasonable locations, and really, we're proposing four, I'd like to ask for a waiver or to modify the existing approval, whichever we deem as appropriate, to not require eight, but to accept the four trees.
Would you be, well, if you got a waiver on the trees, would you be willing to make the contribution to the Environmental Commission?
That's up to the clients to decide. I believe it's $600 per tree.
I believe so.
$650.
$650.
So, the building was approved back in '07 or '08, whenever it was finished, as is, so the trees were never there. And as you mentioned, it's a historic building from 100 years old, and there's really no way to ever, ever comply with that ordinance?
The resolution required them.
But the building was approved.
By that resolution I'm referring to.
Yeah, the building was.
The approval required in the conditions to put the street trees.
It was a condition of approval.
It wasn't that waived in '06. It was part of the conditional approval.
That's what I thought.
They were not put in. So I understand what you're saying, but I'm just going to be clear that it's in the resolution that they would be installed.
You really can't waive a condition of approval. You can have, you can have an excision or a modification, because essentially what you're doing is you're, this is like a second bite of the apple, because you, you already had those conditions imposed, you did not object to them at the time, this is a fairly established approval. So it's not a situation where you can, you can wa, you can get a waiver now. You would, you're essentially, the, the nature of your application is a modification or an excision of the condition, and that'll be up to the Board. Is it my understand, I mean, let me ask another question, if I may, and Mr. Cole, you can help me out in this regard. Were there other conditions of the previous approval that we're not complied with? Yes, I understand, but I just, I want, I want your testimony on the record.
No, I think most of the conditions, the landscaping, the street trees aren't there. Some of the street trees, I think, were planted, but that was 20 years ago, essentially.
Mike, how did he, how did they get a CO?
Why did they get a CO? Yeah.
I can't answer that.
So who, who, who monitors whether they put trees in or not on the resolution?
In '06, the engineer was the county engineer. I was the planner, not the engineer. Typically, the engineer makes sure the site improvements are done.
Okay.
Typically.
Like, I'm going back, although I get the less I remember, but didn't we have a discussion about the Somerville Service Station sign on the front of the building?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, that's a different issue, Rich, but that was the sign on the ceramic sign on the top.
Yeah.
Yeah. But back to the question is, if I recall, the resolution was from '06, was amended a couple of times over the years, I think, '07 and '08, but the original Amarosa, the Board was, I couldn't find the signed plans, and the problem was, I couldn't find them because I didn't sign them. So it was, the administrator found the signed plans, they were at the administration building. So we're going back to, technically, it's the Board engineer that usually ensures that the additions of approval are being satisfied. If they're not, they come back to the Board for whatever the Board needs to do with those conditions.
So tonight, they're coming in, they want to put in four trees instead of eight, and the alternative would be to contribute $650 per tree times four?
What I wanted to make clear is on the record, there's no practical way to plant eight trees along the property frontage, between the driveways and then the frontage of the building, you know, where there's, the prison, building's in very close proximity to the street on the north side of the building.
Yeah, since the application's in front of the Board, the approvals, the landscaping requirements doesn't sunset, being that.
Correct.
The Applicant is supposed to be maintaining this indefinitely. So when this application came up, I have to do a site inspection.
Right.
And just pick out. So there's not, if you look at the report, there's not like 18 million issues there. It's basically on the prior approvals, it goes back to the circulation, I'm sure we'll get to, but the landscaping, some it's overgrown, and the street trees. You know, they, Admiral, Admiral, the green giants are there, they're just 30 feet tall. The landscaping was installed. Some of the stuff is a maintenance issue, but some of the street trees are missing. That's why it came up.
So refresh my memory, didn't we also approve the subdivision for the single-family homes?
Yes.
Yes.
So.
That was part of the application, that the, the thing, the building was reduced on the second version. It was three or four meetings on this.
Right.
And the subdivision, the two or three lots were, were carved out, and I do believe the applicant built the houses in question, and the building, I think, was somewhat reduced in size.
It was.
Reduced the intensity as part of the original application. If that helps, that answers your question at all.
It does. Thank you. I guess the question is, you were going to ask, will you contribute $650 for four trees?
And that's the client's, if they're, we, we really can't practically plant more than four.
But you can pay for.
We can, we can pay.
Correct. You can still pay for the other ones.
Can you ask the question? Can you ask the question of the applicant?
I think that they're fully aware.
Yes, that's fine. So we'll plant four and pay for the four.
There you go. Gina will love us.
So that addresses any, that would address any further, any outstanding conditions that remain, Mr. Cole?
Just pruning, some of it's overgrown.
I have, I have some more. Let me, let me, let me continue, because I, there's some more stuff.
I just want to make sure, I, I don't like to be persnickety, but, you know, failure to, failure to conform with conditions is always an issue, especially over a period of time.
So the parking lot trees are the next item on, on my list to discuss. So per ordinance 102-88.C4, there should be provided at least one shade tree for each five parking spaces, exclusives of spaces within a building or parking deck. The shade trees shall be evenly distributed within the interior and around the perimeter of the parking area, so as to provide shade to all parking areas. So trees, trees were planted when the project was completed. I reviewed historic air photos and visited the site to assemble an existing tree plan, AKA what trees were planted as part of the original construction. There are currently nine deciduous trees, they're little leaf lindens, that appear to have been planted as part of the project, and there were four other deciduous trees in the southwest corner of the property that predate the development, two elms, one walnut, and what appears to be a dead ash. So I'm going to go over to the Board and just share. On the west side of the property over here, the large circles are the little leaf lindens.
Mm-hmm.
The large circles with a circle in the center are the existing trees, and then the circles with the spokes on them, those are the evergreen trees. So you can see, there are one, two, three, four, five, six little leaf linden trees that were planted as part of the project, which I believe helped satisfy the tree planting requirements within the parking lot. So six of these linden trees are around the perimeter of the parking lot area between the evergreen buffer to the west and the parking area. There's one in an island, which is adjacent to the southeast corner of the parking lot, I'm sorry, southeast corner of the building, and there's another one in, at the southeast corner of the parking lot. There's one dead linden right here in this island, and I'm proposing to replace that with, again, a columnar Sargent cherry. I think that would be a better choice. So given the amount of existing trees and the proximity to the parking lot, I believe that a good faith effort was made at complying with the ordinance, and I respectfully ask that there's no more tree planting requirements within the site.
You're saying you're going to, you're going to replace the one dead tree.
Correct.
And you have six trees, and it's one per five, so it's 30 parking spaces, which covers it, and that was in place when the, when the resolution was done in '06. So if he, if he can, if there's six trees out there, he satisfies the shade trees, as long as they're being maintained and replacing the dead one, that would certainly address that point, in my opinion.
Okay.
So question then, in your memo where it cites there's only two trees, which, were you not counting certain ones because of the location?
I must have missed it. He's, he's saying he's out there looking at linden. The numbers he's giving comply.
Gotcha. No, I understand that. I didn't know if you're, you were counting, not counting them because they were in different locations.
I didn't see the trees he's referring to.
Okay.
He's saying there's six and it's two. I don't disagree. I saw some dead trees, so I might have been looking at dead shrubs and dead trees, and I didn't get the count right. I, the, the original plan is correct in terms of one in five for the shade trees. If they're there, it, it just goes away. That's the bottom line. He's saying they're there.
Just to replace the one in the parking lot.
Just maintain what you have. If you have the six trees, which the Board required, which was within your ordinance that you quoted, was in '06, in my opinion, we're good.
Yeah.
We're good on that.
Okay. So, the last issue of prior approval that we're going to discuss today is going to be the William Street driveway and a modification of the existing approval. The project was approved with one-way access from North Gaston Avenue to the east, headed west past the nine-angle parking spaces, and then to the other twenty-one parking spaces in the two parking lots to the west of the building. The drive for the nine-angle parking spaces can only be one-way. The angled parking spaces won't work if somebody were to drive the other way. The layout for the parking in the other two parking lots is sufficient for two-way traffic. There are eighteen-foot parking spaces and twenty-four-foot islands. That's standard and typical from a site plan perspective. The one-way out driveway onto William Street is approximately twenty-four feet wide. I think it's in the neighborhood of twenty-three feet, seven or eight inches. But the standard width that could safely handle two-way traffic. It should be noted that the parking requirement for the site, based upon the planner's review, is twenty-three parking spaces. And the parking lots to the west contain twenty-one of those twenty-three required parking spaces, which nearly, can nearly accommodate all of the parking for the site. I just want to reaffirm that there will not ever be the ability to have any eastbound traffic along the angled parking down the south of the building. The William Street driveway access has been and is currently functioning as a two-way drive. I did a lot of research on the history of the project, aerial photos, et cetera, et cetera. I think that the one-way out arrow went away somewhere around twenty-eighteen or twenty-nineteen. There was no arrow for a while, and now I think there's two-way arrows now. Okay. It is unlikely that this driveway-
Yeah, we understand that the, when they, the guy came to repaint it, he put the two arrows down without instruction. That was a mistake. It wasn't designed to change it. He just assumed it was two ways, given the width of twenty-four feet, and unfortunately, you know, the usage by people.
It's unlikely that this driveway creates any additional traffic on William Street. Eastbound travelers coming on William Street are already on William Street. If they're coming to the site from the west, they would either enter into the driveway there or come around the block and come in on the North Gaston Avenue side. Given the left-turn lane on the westbound side of Union Street, there's a left-turn arrow. So, anybody that were coming to the site from the east at a traffic signal would be in the left-turn lane, could very easily make a left turn and go on to the North Gaston Avenue exit. If somebody were traveling westbound and didn't realize that that was their destination, the left turn in on that William Street driveway would be another option. If they didn't have that option, they would probably have to go.
I've got a question.
All right, go ahead, Rich.
We're having testimony on traffic from a guy that's not a traffic guy. And I'm just asking, Cliff, for you, is that proper?
I have my, thank you. I have my concerns because you are not qualified as a traffic engineer. If you're merely reciting facts and not expert opinion, you probably can do it, though it... I have my concerns as to whether, well, I mean, I don't want to be the bad guy here again.
No worries.
But, you know, I'm not, if there are traffic issues, you really should have a traffic engineer who can, who is qualified. I'm sorry, but I mean, I, you know, clearly, this application's had some previous, you know, has some history. So, I mean, let's get it right.
Okay. Well, just like I said, I was just discussing the traffic as a planner from a planning perspective, not traffic counts.
Right. You can testify as a fact witness, but you can't opine. The board would be directed to disregard any such opinions.
Okay, so we can put a pin in the driveway for now?
Yeah. I think that's a smart move to go through the sign and...
So, the last item for discussion today would be the tenant directory sign. And this is a variance, or the variances that we're here for tonight. The main thrust of this application is the tenant directory sign, which is located on the parapet on the east side of, east facade of the building facing North Gaston Avenue. The proposed sign is four feet by ten feet, which is forty square feet, and is mounted nineteen feet, six inches off the ground. The sign will serve as a tenant directory with each tenant listed on the sign. As there are currently four tenants, there are four tenants listed on the sign. The building retail center has a unique orientation and layout that affects retailer visibility. In a typical retail center, the building is set back from the street with parking in front and good retailer sign visibility. Given the site layout with the building at the William Street right-of-way and the parking main entrance behind the building, the end tenants have good street visibility and the internal tenants less so. The signs on the William Street canopy and the windows are marginally effective. This tenant sign is designed to improve tenant visibility. This explains the need for the sign. Just want to now just explain a couple of options or a couple of description of the sign. The proposed sign is an internally illuminated box sign with a light, white translucent face and six-inch red letters. We are proposing that the light source be dimmable LED, so light levels can be reviewed and adjusted to the satisfaction of the board engineer or another borough designate. The hours of sign illumination will be from dusk till eleven P.M. The pizzeria is the latest open business on site. And I think every day except for Friday and Saturday, they're closed at ten-thirty. So, Friday and Saturday would be eleven. So, we chose eleven o'clock as the time to shut the sign off. The sign will be constructed and installed to meet all applicable building codes and borough requirements. The sign requires relief as follow. From ordinance section one oh two dash one nineteen B, wall sign location. The sign may not extend above the eaves or the bottom of the building roof. The sign is located on the parapet, does not extend above the parapet, but is above the bottom of the building roof and the eaves. One zero two dash one nineteen B, wall sign projection. The maximum projection of eight inches from the wall it is mounted on. The sign that we have proposed is mounted twelve inches off the wall. It's a four-inch deviation. In my mind's eye, this is a pretty minimal ask for that. We have section one zero two dash one nineteen F, wall signs. One wall sign is permitted per business per wall. The Delta Smoke Shop has a current sign on the lower roof, and they are also listed on the tenant directory sign. One zero two dash one nineteen F, wall sign size. Only one dimension, either vertical or horizontal, shall be permitted in the B-four zone to exceed two feet. The sign proposed is four feet by ten feet or forty square feet, and it is greater than two feet in both dimensions. And the last one is one zero two dash one nineteen F, wall sign square footage. Display surface area of the sign shall not exceed one square foot for each linear foot of wall in the B-four zone. We have fifty-one linear feet of wall along North Gaston Avenue. We're permitted to have fifty-one square feet of sign. The proposed tenant directory sign is forty square feet, and the existing Delta Smoke Shop sign is thirty-two square feet. Before I get into the variance proofs, would anybody like to discuss or ask any questions about anything so far?
Anybody from the board have any questions of Mr. Conway's presentation?
Not now.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so for the variance proof, the first thing I'll talk about is the positive criteria. We believe that the requested variance can be approved as either C-one or C-two variances or a combination thereof, where the shallow depth of the property combined with the location and configuration of the lawfully existing structure creates a hardship in improving the signage and tenant visibility without the need for variance relief. NJ forty colon fifty-five D dash seventy C-two, also known as the flexible C variance. I think that can also apply where the plan with the variance proposed represent a better planning alternative than a conforming one. Municipal board is empowered to grant a variance under C-two where an applicant, application or appeal, the purposes of the MLU will be advanced by a deviation from the zoning ordinance requirements, and the benefits outweigh the detriments. Of the seventeen purposes of the act, we feel the application advances at least two of them. Two A, which would be to encourage municipal action to guide appropriate use of development of lands in a matter that will involve public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. I think that the sign promotes safety by the, it's a clear sign, clear concise sign to aid the driver and potential customers in helping to find the building. And it advances the general welfare. Proposal calls for improvements to help bolster the economic vitality of an existing resale center and the tenants within. This will continue to provide tax benefits to the community, provide jobs and services to the community. This is consistent with the goals of the master plan. Also, two G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, commercial, and industrial use in open space, both public and private, according to the respective environmental requirements and order needs of all New Jersey citizens. Again, the continuing improvement of permitted use in the B-four zone, which meets the goal, goals and objective of the municipal land use law. So, the negative criteria, no variance or other relief can be granted without showing that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. The proposed sign does not negatively affect the adjoining properties. It's on the east side of the building and faces commercial properties. The sign is a tenant directory sign and only lists the building tenants. There's no substantial detriment to the public good.
Would you please speak up?
I'm sorry. Insofar as the intent and purposes for the master plan, the site is in the B-two neighborhood business residential district and is a continuing permitted use. The retail center has been operational for almost twenty years. The application proposes the installation of a new tenant directory sign to identify the building tenants. Application is consistent with the master plan goals and objectives, as well as a Gaston Avenue redevelopment plan, specifically in maintaining, in quotes, "commercial retail along North Gaston Avenue", increasing property values and tax revenues by providing development that enhances borough economic vitality and serves the needs of the community by supporting the retail and supports the, support the adjoining residential neighborhoods by encouraging boutique retailers to open within a short distance to these neighborhoods. The application poses no detriment or impairment to the master plan or zoning ordinance. In closing, we are seeking board relief from the street trees, as we discussed, to plant four and provide compensation for four to the tree fund. We talked about the existing onsite trees in the parking lot, how they're compliant with the prior approval. The driveway will be discussed at a future date and the variance for the signs we just talked about. That concludes my testimony, and I'm happy to discuss anything further if the board has any questions.
Anyone from the audience have any questions of the, Mr. Conway? Please come up, state your name. Please identify yourself on the record, please.
I'm Meg Andrews, Walnut Street in Somerville. Been here nineteen years. And I live around the corner from this development. Quick question, was he supposed to be sworn in?
He was.
He was.
I did swear him in.
Okay, okay. There was a question. Okay. Was he sworn in?
He's a lawyer. He's sworn in by oath.
I'm sorry. Back to my, um, the, are you aware that the no-stopping and standing sign that was in front of the building on the William Side Street was taken down the same time that the one-way sign for the parking lot on William Street?
I thought we were carrying the circulation items.
Well, who's the point?
He's referring to, his testimony was regarding the sign and the landscaping. And the applicant agreed to carry the circulation comment to a further time until a traffic engineer was going to testify.
That is correct.
Okay. Then I guess-
Isn't that a city sign anyways?
I don't know.
Correct. That was my point. The city sign came down the same exact time as the one-way sign in front of Primo.
You witnessed the people taking it down?
I noticed the signs disappeared at the same time. We're gone. I drive it pretty much every single day. I have pictures spanning years. I have a lot of evidence here, actually.
Was that reported?
Several times. It took a long time. Yeah. And then, because the police and the borough kept going back and forth as to whose responsibility was what. And then finally, it was determined that the no-stopping sign was the police. The one-way was whoever tries to make, the owners followed the rules.
If the sign needs to go back up, we can contact Rodney.
Correct.
And, and can we get some cones until the matter's heard? It's been this for over a year, and they've known it, this company. Stating it can't go both ways. It's a traffic hazard. And I'm happy to leave some information for everybody after, including you guys.
Thank you.
Contact DPW on that.
I have one more question. Just for the record, I assume it's not typical for a company to make changes against the agreement, the resolution, prior to asking for the waiver?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
They, the change was made and they didn't fix it. And then they asked for, and then the town said, hey, you're not allowed to do this. And then they said, oh, we're going to ask for a waiver when we ask for the sign.
And what, what specific, for the sign? The only thing they asked for a waiver for was the trees.
They are, they are asking for a waiver, I believe that's what it's called, to change what was originally the one-way exit out of there onto William and be, sorry, I just lost my train of thought. Can you ask something?
I understand what you're saying. They're asking for an amendment to the site plan.
The change was made, and they've been aware of it for over a year, and still, everybody's allowed to come in and out. And the police are called over and over again.
If it was required, and we haven't amended it, just put the signs back up.
As I recall, as I recalled, our hearing for this application, they presented that traffic plan. That was not our idea. And we approved what they presented. That's my understanding.
That's not what, no. That's not accurate. I have the notes in the minutes from all back then.
They, they presented a traffic plan to this board that we saw was one-way.
Right.
Yeah, and that's what we approved. It was our plan. We didn't tell them to do it. They said they were going to do it.
That's not, I mean, I can, I'll show you the stuff after if you want. It was very clear that the board really wanted to make sure that that flow went one-way.
Yes.
Whether or not, whose idea it was, it was clear the board-
It doesn't matter. I know what you're saying.
Was very-
We approved the plan. That's what we're talking about.
Yeah. He doesn't recollect that this was a required, like, that he asked for the one-way plan. This was a board requirement?
It was a requirement at the end of the hearing, but I think the design came from them.
The design-
That's what we approved.
Right. The design was by Ed Dick.
Yeah.
That was the, that was the engineer for your client.
That's not your Lex, so but it is.
And Ed, the angled parking, there was no choice other than make it one-way. And the idea was, it was, we, we've struggled with the storefront issue. So, the idea was one-way to lower the intensity on William Street. That was the, that's what's in the resolution.
Does that make sense? Like?
Yes.
Yeah, because I have, okay. Okay. I think that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments on Mr. Conway's appearance? Board? Mr. Calidre, you have anyone else?
No.
Someone like to move or close the public portion of this application?
I'll move it.
Move? Second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Board, what's your pleasure?
I've got concerns. Number one, we're going to put off the traffic issue, but I think we need some expert to use the word, somebody under pressure, to give us the traffic and- somebody under pressure, to give us the traffic conditions. But I'd also like to have the police reports on that intersection, going back whatever time is appropriate, just to see what the accidents are and what caused them. There's always been accidents on that corner, it's nothing new. But I think we should get the history, and that's available through our police department.
Right.
And I think they should present traffic testimony. And then we may have to deal, figure out how to deal with it, that'd be up to Mike to figure out what we do. But I think because of that intersection, we should know more about it. You know, I've, I've actually responded to accidents on a corner, so I'm familiar with it. The changing of the traffic pattern has me concerned. You know, and I think that's an issue for code enforcement, not for us.
I con, I concur with the last comment made by Mr. O'Neal. I, Mr. Chairman, I, I have concerns. I mean, is this, is the board ready to take any action on this application? I don't get the feeling that it's, you know, that, that, I get the feeling there's still some material information out there, and that the board may not be voting on what, you know, all the information it needs. I just wanna express my concern in that regard.
Looks like we have something that was approved and subsequently changed while the board approval.
Yes.
I think we need to go back to that.
I'd like to add that I had some comments about, I'm, a variety, that these trees are thirty feet tall, the shrubs. I, I didn't bring it up, and I don't think it was appropriate for Brian to bring, because that's property maintenance, to maintain the landscaping, I don't think it's an actionable item for the board here. If you install a landscaping, you have to maintain it. So I, that's why, I, we didn't discuss the maintenance of the landscaping, because I don't think it's a board act issue, it's a property maintenance issue.
I understand that. Ward, what's your pleasure?
Here's what I'm thinking, if they wanna conclude their, their application tonight, I'm prepared to vote on it. But if they wanna, if they wanna have a continuance, I'm okay with that too. But I don't think we had a complete hearing, based upon what I've heard, I can't be in favor of it, need more information.
Anyone else feel that way?
I would agree with that. I would go further to say, I think this sign is horrible. I mean, it's just a hot mess. And I think it, it, I'd like to see a different design, I'd like to see it on the ground, you know, like a wooden sign or something on the ground, I, this is just awful. Pardon me?
Like the property across the street.
Yeah. I, and, and I also, and I'm not a designer, I'm not a graphic designer, but I'm just thinking, your letters are six inches tall, which is about maybe like that? And how, I, I don't know how they're gonna be visible across Gaston Avenue at the traffic light. Six-inch-tall letters aren't gonna give you a lot of vision. I mean, those letters, I don't know, how high, how, how high are those? But if we're voting on this tonight, I'm voting no on this sign, it's awful.
I would like to hear more if I can, so that if we come back with a revised sign.
Well, first of all, you know, to me, to me, it, it just doesn't enhance the building. I mean, you've got a beige building, and maybe this is, maybe this is girly. You've got a beige building with green trim, now you're putting red letters that are six inches tall on a white sign. I, I mean, it just, it, it just looks awful. And I think you would be better served if you put it on the ground.
Our ground-mounted signs.
Like a wooden sign? I mean, other places do that.
You would need a variance because you already have one sign.
Correct.
I think what Roberta's referring to is doing something that enhances the building.
Yes.
It's the gateway to the community.
I understand.
And a four-by-ten box sign, I'm getting the feeling the board doesn't find it to be aesthetically attractive. So maybe pin letters, backlighting, brass, something lower, something that pops a little bit and gets the message across, that helps the tenants, but yet enhances the attractiveness to the, for the building.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, right, I mean.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I get a little carried away.
I mean, I, I appreciate the need for the signage, especially for the retailers who cannot be seen from the street. But I think the execution might be a little bit off for that, for the building. And again, I appreciate the building being redone twenty, twenty years ago, because it's, it used to be abandoned. So I appreciate that it was, that it is an active building now. But I do have some similar issues about how the, the retailers are projected onto the street. I think a sign, I, again, I appreciate the need for the sign, but I'm not sure if this sign's the one.
I also have, just in my capacity as the board's attorney, I have concerns about the fact that there were conditions of approval of a previous resolution that weren't complied with. I mean, it would be something, quite candidly, you know, I'm not sure that the board, I, I want, I want the applicant to be able to certify or confirm that all conditions of the previous resolutions have been complied with. And if not, why not, and that doesn't necessarily mean that's acceptable. Because I always, it's a danger signal when I see that in a report that a twenty-year-old approval does, still has conditions that aren't complied with. It's just my professional opinion, as, as the board attorney, my job is to protect you, and I think, remember that the burden is on the applicant to get the relief requested, not on the board.
What other ones you're referring to?
I, I believe what's in Mr., I believe what's in Mr. Cole's report. You, you, you might have communicated with us before this, so we had some idea.
Cliff, I'm sorry, I think there were two items that are still open right now.
Are there, are there any, are there any others? Are there any others? Mr. Cole?
I think it's the landscaping in the street.
All right.
It's, there was a sign, the proposed location, there was a Delacia sign that was supposed to be maintained, and it, it didn't happen during construction. But I'm not saying that was the condition, that was the, it was in the minutes, but you won't see as a condition, so I'm, I'm not gonna say that was a condition. It's just the landscaping that needs to be addressed.
The street trees and then the issue with the driveways.
And it's the property, and the maintenance, which is, I'm set, treating that as separately, just to contain the shrubs.
Yes.
I think it would make great sense to ask for a continuance, to rethink the sign. What I'm hearing from the board is, they would, they understand the need for a sign, they want something that pops, and they're not saying you can't have a sign because it's a variance. They're saying, if there's a need, just do something that makes sense that helps the tenants out, that helps, enhances the building, enhances the intersection.
And that meets the statute.
Okay, so there, the board's not saying, because it's a variance, you can't even think about it. What the board is saying, let's do something that addresses the need and addresses the community at, as a large. That's what I'm hearing, is that, I'm listening.
I think that's what you're, yeah, Mike.
I, I think the elephant in the room, though, is that the changing of the traffic pattern, just go ahead and do it. And I don't care if somebody shows up and paints an arrow by mistake, you correct that mistake. That was changed. And whether it's a good idea or a bad idea, I'm not prepared to sit here and say, but it was changed. You know, just arbitrarily, as far as I'm concerned, you know, and I'm not a happy camper about that. That's gotta be resolved, in order to resolve it, we have to have traffic engineering, and I want accident history, I wanna know what's going on down there.
Okay. I agree.
So it's a girly-designed sign, number one. And I keep on listing for the need, why, why is this needed?
Well, and now, actually, we do have a witness, if you would allow me to call her up, she's the.
It's done for tonight.
Okay.
But if there was such a big need, you have four tenants that are there, and I haven't heard any testimony about that.
She's late, I'm sorry. But I understand that.
It doesn't appear that you were fully ready to go, I guess I, I hate to be that blunt, but, because there's so many questions, and some of it has to do with, with information that's not provided. So, I, I, I don't know what else to say, I don't know what else to say in my capacity, but that's kinda my approach.
On the point of the need, I think I heard some members of board note that the visibility of the tenants is limited, so I felt like that was already recognized by at least some of you. And anybody that drives by the building can tell that it's not exactly the most normal-shaped retail center.
You can't testify, sir. I mean, I'm sorry, as I say, just, this would seem to me that you might have been, well, I, I think I've said everything I'm gonna, I can say.
I don't think the board is saying that the sign's not needed.
Right.
I think we recognize the sign could go there. I think we probably look for a little redesign, more historic in nature, or aesthetically pleasing.
Something a little creative, like pin lining, backlighting, not just a four-by-ten box sign. The problem with the box signs in the borough is they become an eyesore in ten years. And then we have the First Amendment on what the contents are. So if you have pin letters, something attractive, if that needs to change, then we're not dealing with a box sign. So, I'm just throwing one idea out.
I understand, I'm very thankful.
Recess lining, backlighting, something that makes, enhances the building and addresses the need.
Considerations of traffic safety.
Yeah.
Which is why you fundamentally have signage.
Scallop show. Mr. Calandre, what do you want to do?
As far as proceeding with any approvals? Can we split the trees off at least and finish that, or?
You split the applicant, I think we, what you need to do is withdraw it, or ask for a continuance.
Okay, we'll ask for a continuance.
Come back with a revised plan. I think the board has been giving you their marching orders, and I think you just need to fine-tune it.
Understood.
Plus, the things that Mr. O'Neal needs.
Do they have to notice, re-notice?
It depends on how long it's gonna take them. Oh, we're meeting twice a month.
We're booked through the first week of August. So our next available meeting date would be August twentieth.
Yeah, the backlog is down to less than six weeks, so.
Twentieth or twenty-seventh?
The twentieth.
Twentieth, okay.
So does that require, are we noticing or?
That's a question for our attorney, not me.
Why don't we leave it there and see when you're ready, and see what the timing is? And then you can talk with Cliff to, leave it open-ended, to see how long it takes, is that on the noticing?
I think under the circumstances, it might be appropriate that they re-notice.
Okay.
Okay.
Considering we have at least one or more parties in interest that have already appeared to express their concerns, I mean, there might be others.
And, and the continuance, Cliff, they're gonna have to waive the time to act, then?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, they would.
So you have a time in mind, Cliff, on how long that should be, or?
Well, let's see, the next hearing would be the twentieth of August. I think we should probably do it way through, maybe October first.
Why are we setting their schedule, they don't know what they're doing.
They have, they don't give us a waiver of the time to act.
That I understand, but.
But the problem is the.
We don't want a default approval.
I agree with that, but why don't we just?
They have to, they have to.
Kill it.
Give us some correspondence, right, Cliff?
That is correct, they need to consent on the record, and they need a letter confirming it.
Or, or we could kill it.
Or you could vote yes, you could dismiss it without prejudice.
And that way, we have all the time in the world, so do they.
Right, right.
I mean, I won't, I, I, I don't wanna mislead the board, it does appear that there's some, you know, unresolved issues that need to be addressed. And I, everything I'm hearing from the board membership points to that.
I, I, you're hearing us right, I think, that's why I'm saying, why don't we dismiss it and let them apply when they appropriately can? Otherwise, we're gonna end up with extensions and all, we're gonna get caught up in a web.
Again?
Again.
Is anybody else in agreement with that?
I think we have, we have open issues, though, I think we can dismiss it.
Can?
It can be denied, it can be denied without prejudice.
Yeah.
Denied without prejudice.
Yes.
I make the assumption that we deny the application without prejudice.
Means you would, which means you would still be able to reapply, frankly, correct everything that we discussed, reapply, and the board would certainly be in a position to more comprehensively adjudicate your application.
And Cliff, that puts us off the clock.
Yes. No, I do not want us to be in, we've had too much of that lately.
Really?
Too much of that lately, I don't wanna, yes, I.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second? Any, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Adair?
Yes.
Ed Allot?
Yes.
Roberta Carpenitz?
Yes.
Morgan McLaughlin?
Yes.
Rich O'Neal?
Yes.
Brian Videmski?
Yes.
John Flores?
Yes.
Eric Alvarez?
Yes.
So the application is dismissed without prejudice?
Thank you.
Or denied without prejudice, pardon me.
Thank you.
Okay. We have discussion, anything you wanna talk about, anything particular?
Just real quick, before, we talked about this, there's gonna be a presentation, the planning board, for Gateway East Main Street next Wednesday, if anybody's interested. On, that's a big development, it's a concept plan, it's for a concept. That's Meadow Street, East Main, the vets. It's, it's about six or seven parcels from, I call it the piano store, Pop's Sandwich Store, the ice cream place, the old Pizza Hut, and the old junkyard that looks like grass on Meadow Street. And I used to be the old Griffith Electric, which is now a landscaping business on Meadow Street. It entitles the whole area. And I think I'm dating myself, I'm talking about names that haven't been around for twenty years.
Yeah, what's the piano store?
I remember Griff, Griffith Electric.
The piano store is the four-story white building that has restaurants, and it used to be, used to sell and maintain pianos, literally.
Sister brothers, there you go.
Yeah, it used to be owned by Eric Lai, and now it's owned by DeSappio. And it's just known around town as the piano building because it, for the piano.
Yeah, Smith used to be there.
When's that meeting?
Next Wednesday, and it'll be live on YouTube, so it's a couple, I'm sorry.
The meeting's here, right?
Meeting's here, next Wednesday, if anybody's interested, it's, I do believe it's four, five, six stories, something like that. A parking deck, and a couple, a couple hundred apartments or something with a lot of retail.
Right in the floodplain.
Yeah, so it's in front of the.
It doesn't flood.
Will there be a marina?
So that's gonna be next, if anybody's interested in that. Yes, the parking deck, and everything's elevated, so it won't, it's out of the flood, lot of floods.
Noah said the same thing.
Other than that, the fair share plan was submitted to the DCA, filed, so the borough has a, the housing element and the fair share plan is done. As done as it can be. We met the deadlines, the borough met the deadlines, which is the end of June, we went up. We're participating in round four.
I think it was twenty.
So.
Twenty-seven or twenty-four?
It's, it's twenty-two units for prospective need, and the present need is, which is the rehab. So rehab is twenty-seven units of rehab.
What's going on with our buddy across the street here, I haven't seen the actual house, he take that tree down?
No, not yet, not yet, he has another deal in hand.
I, Ryan, right, have you reached out to you at all?
I have not heard anything.
We had discussed encouraging demolition and limited work to get, well, and moving, and I haven't seen anything on that application. I'm sure we're all chopping the bit to keep it moving, but the ball's in their court, and there's been radio silence on that front.
Yeah.
Did he get the message, Morgan, fine?
Shocked.
I'm disappointed.
Another five years.
Well, that it, Mike?
That's all I have for the soapbox, I know no one wants to hear my soapbox, though.
Well, last year, I'd asked the board if there's any pet projects.
Nothing but squeezing the thing out of the tube.
Things that you don't discuss, or have discussed. Well, as we took a, the leadership role in redefining, or rewriting the POR zone, I know there's other things that we wanna take a look at, because next year, or maybe at the end of this year, the planning board's gonna be looking at the, the master plan and the zoning ordinance. And I know, with the POR zone, we, we took care of the use, allowing it, but we didn't do anything with the bulk variances, like impervious cover. do anything with the, um, uh, bulk variances, like impervious coverage and things like that. So I think we need to take a deeper dive on the POR zone. I'd like to take a look at the, um, zoning on the north side of Second Street, 'cause even though it's nothing but homes there, uh, from Center Street down to, um, Fringe, it's in a, a business district. So somebody could come in there, knock down a couple of homes and put a car wash or something there. So I'd like to take a look at that zoning, to change that from business to residential as it is across the street. I'd also take, like to take a look at the, um, POR zone on the corner of East Main and, um, South Gaston, where Todd Deutsch had come before us with the, uh, plan for the, um, brownstones. I'd like to change, just, uh, take that, or change it from P, POR to R three. One other is Davenport Street. Rich, you're, you're not even old enough to remember Lottery Field. Samuel Davenport owned all that property from High Street all the way down to West, the high school, all small lots. Like where my church is and the properties on each side, we would require a hundred and fifty feet. We have ninety-eight feet between the, the three properties. So everything there is substandard, twenty-eight by, and thirty-foot by a hundred-foot lots. Anything they do requires a variance, 'cause it's an expansion of a non-conforming use. I'm looking at recommending that we change the width of the lots and the size of the lots to conform with what's already there. Instead of every time you, you wanna put a deck or something up, you gotta get a variance. And you know, with a lot of those cases, the, the cost of the variance in the application is more than the project. It is. And I know you wanna talk about F, FAR, you wanna review our FAR requirements. So I'd like to start working on that when our schedule.
Yeah, there, there was talk, maybe this fall, having a joint meeting with the planning board to, a workshop. Yes, that was, that was, there was talk on the planning board to reach out and see everybody's availability, uh, this fall sometime. Hopefully, when our volume of backlog is.
Yes, it's starting.
Is addressed, so.
Back to one meeting in September?
Yeah, it looks, that's what Ryan was saying, that it looks like we're.
So that's all I have. Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I retired, so I have more time for meetings. Now we're not having more meetings?
Rich, if you retired, you can go snout into the traffic over there on Fourth Street.
Woo! I'll do that.
Right from the office in the cemetery, Rich.
Just drag that chair right down there.
I'll bring my coffee, I'll sit there.
I will teach you all you need to know about subterranean low-income housing. Anything else to come to the board?
Uh, just a question. I know, um, at the state level, they have started talking about ADUs, accessory dwelling units. Which would allow a single-family property to have a secondary unit on the property. Is that something that the town is looking into in any way?
We can.
We can discuss that with the joint meeting, the workshop meeting. It's not in the fair share plan, simply because if you do it under the COA regu, not COA, but it's round four, whatever. Okay.
It's all right, we all understand.
If you do it under round four, the applicant generally, the own, property owner loses control of who's in the accessory unit, because it's on a list in the lottery, so you don't know who's gonna be renting the ADU. So to keep control that was not in the fair share plan, it's something absolutely, I think, the planning board has kicked around and it's something that should be, there's some, I think there's some traction, some applications here. But it's not gonna be, it's not in the fair share, share standard will be done on the local level. When I say local, on the borough ordinance, should that happen. If that answers your question.
Yeah, yeah, done. Cool.
I think we kind of are looking at that, even our last meeting where we approved that house to be built at South Gaston and Fairview, where all your gasoline from your car was dripping. But I mean, that was a small car, a small house and small lot and it's gonna work.